As the Brookings County Board of Equalization on Tuesday, April 14th, 2020, would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We have an agenda in front of us as our motion to approve.
The motion.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any changes or comments to the agenda? Any comments? Hang on, all those in favor of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item four is your oaths of office. Each of you has that in front of you. We need to sign those now and pass them down to Jenna. First part of our paperwork is done. Item five, eight forty here.
Can we just verify, is Commissioner Pierce with us?
Not here yet. Leanne, are you on the line? Do we want to call her in? Or she's calling in? We do have a quorum if she's not available.
But we can't hear her.
Hey, Leanne, we can't hear you if you can hear us. If you'd like, we'll wait a minute. That sounded like you. Are you hearing us okay? Maybe she can't hear us.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I just barely, barely, barely hear anybody.
All right, well, I'm talking right into the mic. Can you hear me?
That's better, thank you.
All right, I think all the mics have to be a little bit more sensitive because I'm like on top of it here. We'll have to remember to do that today, I guess. All right. All right, item five is a discussion and possible action on Todd Voss's appeal. Todd, you may come on up and as the appellate, present your appeal. Please state your name for everybody watching.
Yep, my name is Todd Voss. To thank you guys for being here. I'm sure you got better things you'd like to be doing. Like to thank Jacob and his team for the great job they do. I guess to start out, I'm appealing my property taxes on my house based on state law requiring that taxes cannot be assessed at higher than 100% of market value, full and true market value. I've attached two documents in the packet that you got. One is the Brookings County Sheriff Office Public Foreclosure Auction that was open to the public and the property sold for eight hundred and one thousand and some odd dollars. I then just this morning handed you a copy of my actual purchase agreement where the property was listed with best choice. I made an offer through that company. Ron Borkart was the listing agent. We ultimately ended up at eight hundred and twenty thousand. And if you look at my tax assessment, I'm being taxed currently for this year at 1.4 million and it's been lowered to 1.1. Now, I understand that sometimes there are circumstances that come into play, but I've taken every property that was sold in the last two years for over 500,000 and there's not one of them in there that's assessed at higher than what it sold for. I went a step further and researched all price range houses that were sold in the last two years and I could not find any that were assessed at over 100%. I guess Jacob could maybe answer if there are any, but I couldn't find any. We both have some comparables in my neighborhood. They're the ones that are either down at the bottom or in the box. We had both picked a couple of the same ones and a couple different ones. There's none of those that are assessed at over 95% unless you go to the ones that the sale date was 14 years ago and they are only slightly over 100%, which would not reflect today's market value. Now, I've been building houses myself in Brookings for about 20 years and I understand that price per square foot maybe comes into play with the Equalization Office and how they calculate some of this. The one thing that I do know is that if I build a house that's, say, 2,000 square feet and then I double it to 4,000 square feet, the cost will not double. And if I increase it even further to, say, 6,000 square feet, it certainly won't go up that ratio again. So I feel like my home, because it's maybe oversized, is being penalized on the per-square-foot calculations. I would certainly I'd take a couple of the comparables in my neighborhood that are in that $500,000 range or a couple a little higher, a couple a little lower. Would certainly take two of those houses versus mine if mine was going to be assessed at 1.1 million. You get twice as many bedrooms, twice as many twice kitchens, twice everything, and the value is certainly different. So I guess, you know, with that, I'm just asking that my property would be assessed at 100%. I'm not asking for it to be at 85 or 90 of what I paid for it. And I guess in closing, I'd like to this little packet of slips I have here. These are all my tax slips from last year. Totalling $418,000. This is the first time in 39 years that I've come and appealed what I'm being taxed. It's not like I make a habit. I just feel that this would be the fair thing to do.
Okay, Jacob?
Your report? So we got the subject property is 876 Regency Court. We've got a assessed value of 1,001,000. Above grade living is 6,692 square feet. Assessed value per square foot is 166 and 73 cents. We got Comp 1, which is 825 Regency Court. Sale price was 695,000. Above grade living was 3,951 square feet. Sale price per square foot, 175 dollars and 90 cents. We got Comp 2, which is 840 Regency Court. Sale price, 580,000. Above grade living, 2,442 square feet. Sale price per square foot, 240 dollars and 58 cents. Comp 3, we got 872 Regency Court. Sale price of 530,000. Above grade living, 2,198 square feet. Sale price per square foot, 241 and 12 cents. And Comp 4, we got 888 Regency Court. Sale price of 595,000. Above grade living, 2,068 square feet. Sale price per square foot, we got 287 dollars and 71 cents.
Again, I'd like to remind you that all of those properties are assessed at less than 100% of what they sold for. And just by making a house twice as big does not make it cost twice as much.
One thing that I will expand on a little bit too is that we're not supposed to assess any property within our jurisdiction above 100% of market value or what the fair price paid for on the market would be. But we are also bound to go off of a median for our statistical purposes and the median in Sarah Renee addition, which there's 25 homes and five of them that have sold in the past two years. Our median ratio is 93% currently. Your house is included in that bunch.
Right now, mine's being assessed at 136%.
Right, if I just go down the line of our five sales in Sarah Renee, which is your addition, we have one sale at 79% of market. That means our assessed value is 79% of what it sold for. Number two on the list is 85%. 93% is our median. We have a sale at 95% and we have Mr. Voss's sale at 136%. So in terms of Department of Revenue being acceptable in the window of 85 to 100% per neighborhood, we're right in the ballpark there at 93 with the median. Granted, it's a small sample size, but there aren't many, many homes in Brookings that are of this caliber and size.
Questions? Any other comments?
Not for me.
Questions?
I guess mine is along the lines of when a property is foreclosed on and then sold at auction or bank sale or something like that and a subsequent sale occurs. The realization that it is beyond what most people can pay in this market drives that price more than actual market value to build that home. And so we have kind of competing, it seems like there are competing numbers that exist here because less than a half a percent of Brookings or one tenth of 1% of Brookings can even participate in that sale because of the size and cost of that house. And so it doesn't get the same kind of comparable sales that everything else does, correct?
Correct.
Are we mandated to lower that then based on a foreclosure action? And reset the value of all of those homes or how does, I don't, I guess I don't know what the law looks like for how foreclosure sales work in resetting assessed values.
We don't have enough foreclosure sales within our jurisdiction for Department of Revenue to recognize that there's any effect on the market. Miami, Florida, and 30% of your sales were foreclosure sales, you'd have your own separate segregated market for foreclosure property sales and that market would drive itself and wouldn't have an influence on the market value properties and vice versa. But because in Brookings County, we have, you know, in a given year, maybe five stress sales. They're not off on their own. They're just in amongst the statistics.
There were two sales. I did not buy it on the foreclosure, so the sale that I bought it on the open market would be the market value. And I don't think that it's fair that my house is way over assessed and that brings the average up to 93% in that neighborhood. They could assess mine for even more. And I don't think that is fair. If somebody wants to pay 1.1 million, I'd let Ryan write up a contract right now.
So your request is to value it at 820?
Yes.
What does that do to the 93%? It down to what, the neighborhood?
That would be 100% ratio of sale price to assess value and that would still be your top in the five group of sales, so your median would still be at 93%.
What would it drop for footage price then?
820,000 on the assessed value divided by a 6692 per square foot brings the sale price down to 122 dollars and 53 cents per square foot.
The hard part is you can't build cheap commercial construction for even that cost right now, so like even new construction, there's no way you could build that for 820.
Well, you might not. It's still the market value of that home right now, which is what the state law says that they have to be valued at. It probably was overbuilt for Brookings, South Dakota. It may bring more in another city, but it's not in another city.
Maybe to backtrack a little bit, which is the wrong order of events, but this house was built in 2007, I believe, and is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, our office has never stepped foot in that property with the prior owner. We were just given a blueprint and kind of given, you know, here's what we did with the house. So we based our assessment from day one all the way through our 2019 year assessment on information that was assumed with an educated guess. And as soon as Mr. Voss took possession of the property, he was in contact with us and said, hey, here's what I paid. What do we do? And I said, the first thing we need to do is we need to go through the property and make sure it's assessed fairly, just like everybody else is in your neighborhood, at the very least in Brookings County. So we went through the property and corrected some square foot issues on some upper level areas. We don't value cathedral ceiling square foot as living square foot on the upper level and stuff, but long story short, we made some corrections, bringing the value from that 1.4 million and change down to 1.1 million. And at that time, he was on an even playing field with everybody in his neighborhood. This property also had from day one a factor given to it for quote-unquote being overbuilt for Brookings County. And I don't know where the number came from. It's just been on the property, but it has a negative 7% applied to the cost currently for being overbuilt.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
So Jacob, what we are looking at is actual fair market value. Is that correct?
Correct.
And was there any issue with Mr. Voss's purchase as being an arms-length transaction? Willing buyer, willing seller at that point in the sale of the home?
Nope, his sale was cited as a good sale according to Department of Revenue guidelines.
And I think we can talk a lot about overbuilt for Brookings or the size or whatever, but actual fair market value and it was put on the market and the price he paid for it demonstrates what the fair market value of this home is.
Anything else, Leanne?
No, that would be all. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, we would entertain a motion to either make a change, leave it as assessed, or make a motion for the appellate's request. Those are your three options. A compromise, appellate's request, or leave it as assessed by Equalization. Any thoughts?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I would make a motion to value it at the purchase price, which demonstrates the actual fair market value.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for discussion. Leanne, you made the motion? Any discussion?
Just that we may think, because this is a very, very nice home, that it should be worth more than what Mr. Voss paid for it. But the actual sale shows what the market conditions are. And that's what state law is and we should, when it was this recent of a sale, I think we should be following what the actual fair market value was when the property was purchased.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
I guess Alex is, I mean, Jacob got good points, so does Todd. I mean, I was kind of looking at a somewhere in the middle. It's a tough, like I said, it's a tough deal with, I'll have him backing similar situation. I guess I'm not 100% sure either way.
And I you know, I see both sides of the transaction here too, and I do see Todd's point that if you were to put this on at 1.1, I'm not sure you'd get that in Brookings, South Dakota. You know, and that's what's hard. But I also disagree with Todd a little bit in the fact that it wasn't really open up to the public. You do have a sheriff's sale, but that's a foreclosure process. Nobody gets a chance to see it. Taken a big risk for that. But even though there was a broker involved, it didn't go on the MLS open to everybody to look at it. The bank sold it to you and it wasn't an arms-length transaction. And that's, if it's a good transaction, then it's a good transaction. So I would have liked to seen it get out there and see what it would have brought. Maybe 820 is all it would have brought. With showings and offers and stuff like that, but you know, I don't know the process that the bank went through to get rid of it. They looked at the people at the sheriff's sale that were interested and contacted them and said, here's what we're at. Do you want to buy it? But it wasn't thrown on the MLS actually open for it. So I argue a little bit that it wasn't really on the open market. But that it's a good sale. And that's what you said. So on the open market or not really, it was an arms-length transaction in your eyes and that's what we have to go off of. And so I lean more towards Todd on this because of that. It was an arms-length transaction. So you know, I don't know, like I said, if there's a way to meet halfway on it. It would be 100% of there, but I guess I'm okay with the 820 in that aspect because it's what he paid for it and it was arms-length. I would argue it's on the open market, but that it qualified in the state's eyes. And so that's what I guess I need to take. I can tell you that I'd purchased a lot to build a home on from Ron Borkart. And I had then stopped and looked at Kip Ferris's home before I decided to build. And it was just timing that this house came on the market and I looked at it the day that it came on and I bought it right then. So it really, I understand your saying that it didn't really get a chance for everybody else to look at it. Maybe I was in the right place. Maybe not. Maybe, I mean. Well, and like I said, I would say you probably got a good buy is what my thought would be. And I think in the eyes. For sure, if it was in another town, you know, but did I for this town, I don't know. I'll know that in four or five years when I sell it. I'm in this business, but I can't turn around and tell you that on this market it's worth 1.1 because this is one of the larger homes in Brookings. And there's only so much that people in Brookings, like you said, there's one half of one half percent that can afford this. If it was in Sioux Falls and there's million-dollar property sold every month, it's a different story. So it's a difficult situation on that and obviously you can't rebuild this for the 820. But you know, I'm okay with the transaction where it was at and and so I do think you got a good buy, but by how much, I don't know. That's the whole thing. I agree, otherwise I probably would have built it, you know. But I feel that's all it's worth in Brookings if it would have been anymore. As you notice on my offer, I originally offered 750. I didn't think that it was worth a million one in offer 750.
Any other comments on the motion? Again, the motion is to
Chair?
Approve the appellate's request at 820,000. Yes, Commissioner Pierce?
Just one final thing. State law is clear that we look at an arm-length transaction and we use fair market value for purposes of valuing the property. This appeal is different than many appeals we've heard in the past where somebody's coming in and they did some adjustment to the property. They did some improvements and then they objected to how we were valuing it. This is different than that. And I don't think we should be looking at, well, what if this and that? The law is pretty clear. We look at an arms-length transaction, actual fair market value. And I don't think we get to substitute our judgment for the market when it was sold according to what the statutes say it should be sold for. Thank you.
Thank you. On the opposite end of that scale, I know I've seen properties around my neighborhood that have sold for a lot more than I thought they were probably worth. And of course, my value went up as a result of that. Same comparable, so it happens the other way too occasionally where properties sell for a lot more than they're probably worth because the market dictated it, but that then changed my value. So I guess I'm in favor of if it goes one way, it should also go the other if the value goes down by the actual sale price, arms-length transaction. by the actual sale price, arms-length transaction. So, any other comments?
Can I clarify something? The appellate's request column, the structure is the 765-1, correct? Those numbers were flipped?
Yes, you're correct on that.
And the land was the 54-9?
Land is going to remain at 54-9 across the board.
Okay.
The total, what the motion's 820,000. Is there any other discussion? If not, on this one, we have to call the roll.
Pierce?
Yes.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Voss.
Thank you.
Move on to item six, is a discussion of possible action on the Lyle Johnson appeal. Mr. Johnson is not here unless he's on the phone?
Nope, he's not expected to be in contact with us at this point.
All right. So we'll move on to your report here, Jacob.
A little background on this. We had, Lyle Johnson is a township board member in Brookings Township. And every year, we give out a map to every township board. And it indicates every land value over 20 acres and what the average land value is per acre on every parcel. So begin with was, is, he has some wet land, some low-lying land, some land that was planted, but there's no production there. He's got water issues. He's right on the river bottom. He took the map and looked at his property, and then he looked at his neighbor, who he thought, you know, in, in reality, that's a comparable property. So he looked at what their value was on average per acre, and it was like 810 or 820 dollars per acre. So what the board did was they applied that 810 or 820 dollars per acre to his parcels that he had appealed. So they came up with the value that they lowered it to on local board. Which you can see this first parcel here, which is the east half of the southwest quarter in section 20. The assessment notice went out at 177 total, but he's got 80 acres there, and it's valued at $80,000, $1,000 per acre. And he requested that it be valued at, stay on that screen there, please. Yep. He requested it be valued at that $810 an acre for a land value of quest, and when we got the decisions from the board back, we, we looked at his value and the way that we've been maintaining equalization within this, within the ag sector on land that is wet is, the only thing we're allowed to do at this point is make adjustments that you can document. So what we've done is we've taken, if you come in and said, you know, my whole entire 80 acres is non-farmable, it's wet, can't farm it, doesn't produce. So we'll look at your, your soil inventory, and in your soil inventory, the, the tables indicate whether that soil is highest and best used for crop, or highest and best used for non-crop. If there's any inventory on that parcel that's crop, we'll adjust it by a negative 46% to get down to that grass top dollar. So it's being va- valued, just like grassland. On this parcel here, we had not done that prior to sending assessment notices out, but in discussion with him, we have to do the fair and equal thing, which has been done to several of his neighbors, is adjust his crop inventory down 46% on anything that cannot be cropped or is not being cropped. Well, we had a flyover done last spring, so it's pretty easy to tell in the current what's being cropped and non-cropped. So our recommendation for the, for the land value to go from 80,000 on the assessment to 64.8 at local board, but we're recommending a value of 70,400, and that represents all of his crop soil inventory that cannot be cropped, adjusted down 46%. And we had a pretty lengthy phone discussion on this process and how we have to maintain fair and equal. This is the thing that we're allowed to do by documentation as of right now, and he was in agreement with this. So it's essentially an appeal from me, from what the local board did, back to you guys to maintain equalization.
All right, any questions? Any comments for Jacob?
You said that he agreed to that?
Yeah. His, his comment was, well, if that's the way it's got to be, to be fair. I mean, their methodology also makes sense. They looked at a neighbor on the map and said, the neighbor's valued at $810 an acre, and I'm valued at $1,000. How is that fair? Well, it's the same entire process all the way through until you get to the soil ratings. And his neighbor just so happened to have a soil rating, an overall soil rating that was 4% lower than his soil rating. Soil ratings, we can't touch. They are what they are. So that was the difference in the dollar amount value that he was witnessing on the map. And although I agree with his methodology to come up with a fair and equal number, we did the exact same thing to his neighbor and, and him now adjusting his crop inventory down 46%.
Any other discussion? Okay, what, what you can do here is, the appellate's request is a motion 161-8. Local board at 161-8 left alone, or Jacob's recommendation from the assessor's office at 167,400. So those are your, your options. Is there any motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the assessor's recommendation of the full of 167,400.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Leanne, any discussion?
Nothing from me, thank you.
All right, from anybody? Not hearing any, we'll call the roll.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is approval of corrections. The documents on the first one is the
We have to go through Johnson, Appeal 2, 3.
We've got all of them.
He's got three more to do.
All right, let's go to number three then. I'm sorry, I thought we did them all, but, okay. Oh, three. Your report.
Thanks, Stacy. Appeal three is the same story. It's just located in the northwest quarter, and it's accepting an acre drive of there. It's 132.5 acre parcel. Again, it's either all of it, or most of it is non-farmable due to water. The assessment notice went out at 259.6. The appellant requested that his value be lowered to 206,700, just because of his neighboring properties on that map. We reached the same understanding here and recognize the fact that all of his crop soil inventory had been reduced by 46% dating back to 2010, and that's when the productivity method came into law. So he's, since that point in time, had all of his crop soil inventories reduced to grass soil, basically. Requires no further adjustment.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to either approve the appellate's request, or the local board action is the same, or the assessor's recommendation of 259,600? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Jacob's assessor's recommendation at 259.6.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll go on to the Johnson appeal 004.
This parcel here went out at 70,500. The appellate's request was to be valued similarly to his neighbor again. When looking at this soil inventory in this parcel, the inventory is 100% non-crop soil, so there's no adjustment that would be warranted in that situation. His argument is that it's wet, and he can't crop it, and it's not being valued like land that should be cropped. We reached an understanding to take the value back to what the assessment notice went out at.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve either the appellate's request of 57,600, or the assessor's recommendation of 70,500? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the assessor's recommendation of 70,500.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I believe we skipped appeal number one.
We did?
On the list, yep. It's the same thing again. His assessment notice went out at 150,700 on the land. He's got 80 acres there. They lowered it at local board. Looks like this one had the 46% reduction applied to his crop soil inventory back in 2015. So it's been in existence here now for four assessment years, so no further reduction is warranted at this point in time.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve either the appellate's request of 243,600, or 272,700?
I'll make a motion to accept the assessor's recommendation, assessor's recommendation of 272,700.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments from anyone? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we still have number five?
Nope, that would be it.
That'll be it, okay.
We did them all just out of order.
I got you. I see, I didn't see a one on here. It's just a two, three, four, five, so. Okay, on approval of corrections, there's a document. We are going to have a couple of those, I guess. So is there a motion to approve the correction for Margaret Chapman, parcel number 36225-00300-007-00? Is there a motion to approve?
Come over.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any report?
Uh, the background on this one is, it's a residential rental house in Volga City Limits. The owner contacted us and had mentioned that she was in recent contact with a Realtor about selling the house, and their indicated value was much lower than what we had it assessed at. So we said, fine, we're going to come take a look at it. We were set to look at all small-town properties residential-wise this summer anyway, so we just got this one off the list right away. Looked at it, and we agreed with her. There were some changes that needed to be made. Notice 81.6, down to 66,800, and she's in agreement with that.
Any other com- any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item B is an action to approve correction to Ryan Nagelhout, parcel number 05425-11052-354-00. Is there a motion to approve?
Come over.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Could we have a report?
Background on this one is the property owner qualified for ag classification on the property, and the application was submitted along with his income verification in between the time assessment notices were sent out and today, so we're allowed to do this by way of correction.
Any questions or comments? Any comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries. Item eight is an action to approve new applications for tax-exempt status. We have a document that has exempt statuses on it. Is there a motion to approve?
Come over.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Jacob?
Um, on this application for new exempt status, there is a spot on the back where it's a report of investigation to be made by the Director of Equalization prior to meeting at the county board, and I've done all my preliminary investigations. And a little bit expanding on the Lincoln Pipestone Rural Water, that one I was unsure of. We have several rural water co-ops that have different percentages of exemptions on their property within Brookings County already. So I was in contact with Ben Kleinjohn, our Deputy State's Attorney, and he guided me through the process in verifying that they do qualify for this exemption and how much.
Any other comments or questions? Comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries. Item nine is a presentation of the 2020 Assessment of Real Property and Building Permit Information. And I have a couple of documents there with building permit and assessments. Jacob?
I'm short of reading this out loud to you. I'll just highlight the important points here. The assessment notices are to be sent to every property owner by March 1, legally. They were sent out this year on February 13, 2020, and they represent market value as required by South Dakota Codified Law 101337. Our median level of assessment in ag is considered 100% because we're valuing using the productivity method. So our taxable factor on the ag side is 85, again, like it had been in years past. We ended on our non-egg transactions. We had 511 sales countywide. We ended at 90.06% of market value on our assessments. That's again, based off of the median. Therefore, our taxable factor on our non-egg properties should land at 94.4%. You can see where we ended in 2019 on the abstract for total value countywide. How much has increased in value due to reappraisal between 2019 and 2020? How much has increased due to growth? And then the TIFs are listed down below, so we have 1.3% growth for 2020. The growth percentage always seems to come down just a little bit, but the base is getting bigger as we go, so the percentage-wise, it's not really a true indicator of growth. Down at the lower part of that page there, it shows all the exemptions that are being utilized right now in Brookings County. The number of parcels per exemption and the total exemption amount for all those parcels. So we have 1,941 parcels under some sort of property tax exemption for 2020's assessment for a total exemption of 214 million and change. The building permit information on the next page is kind of just a for-your-information type thing to see how we're, we're coming along with growth and building permits issued, but we've, we've taken countywide and divided it up between how many were issued in Brookings City, and all the small towns are out in the townships. And you can see that our total permits are down, you know, 25 from last year, which isn't alarming. New house building permits are also down about 15 from what they were in 2019. 75 new houses in Brookings City, 30 new houses out in the small communities, and 23 new houses built out in the townships. Our parcel count is, it's nice to keep track of our parcel count, because we have IAAO standards that allow us to staff our office accordingly to the number of parcels we have. And our parcel count continues to grow, and you can see it grows by 150 to, you know, 100 to 150 every year. 1,300 total parcels countywide.
Did that complete your report?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item 10 is presentation of the tentative 2020 in school districts. Jacob?
Starting on the township page here, you'll see where we ended in 2019 for total assessed value in that township. And then you can see in the reappraisal column, there's a whole lot of red going on. Your ag land fluctuations are recorded in the reappraisal column. And if you remember that 75% of the soils in Brookings County are considered highest and best used for crop. Crop soils went down 1.5%, so we lost quite a bit of value there in the ag land side. And we didn't do any reappraisal projects out in the townships this year to offset that land value, so you'll see a lot of red in the reappraisal, but then you also see in the third column how much growth we've had in, in each particular township. Now, growth is anything that we can record. That would be new construction, or anything that would be a change in class. If you're going from an ag classification and selling off 10 acres on a property, and that goes from ag classification to non-egg, the difference in value there is considered growth as well. So it's not actually true growth of buildings that you see popping up. It's, it's other things too, but there's positive growth in every township. And you can see the percentage of growth to total value there in the last column.
Any questions? No questions, we'll move on. Thank you, Jacob. Item 11 is an action to approve the tax-exempt status exemptions. Is there a motion to approve? Test, motion been made and seconded. Jacob, a report on tax-exempt status.
Yep, these are different from the first tax exempts that we acted on, in that they've been exempt in prior years past, and they're just continuing their exemption by way of short form. If you're, if you're a property that wants a tax exemption and you're brand-new this year for that tax exemption, you have to complete a long form with the investigation involved. Once that's been approved, for the next four years, you're, you're allowed to submit a short form application, which is this list of properties here.
Any questions? Any comments or questions on the list? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. Item 12 is an action to approve owner-occupied status applications. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded.
Jacob, a report?
This list here, for anybody listening that's not aware, owner-occupied status gives you a tax reduction at about 25 to 30%, depending on where your house is located for any primary residence that you apply. The assessment notices, again, were sent out February 13th. The deadline on the owner-occupied form is March 15th. So anything that was submitted between time assessment notices were sent out, and the deadline on the form is on this list. The top of the list are the ones that we're adding owner-occupied on. They're receiving the reduction. Scroll down a little farther, there's a couple at the bottom there that we've found a reason to remove the owner-occupied status for the 2020 assessment year.
Any questions or- Any questions or comments on the owner-occupied status applications? Any questions or comments? If none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries. Item 13 is presentation of the 2020 Renewable Resource Energy Tax Credits. It's a presentation, Jacob?
This is a list of all properties within Brookings County that are receiving a reduction on their assessment because of a renewable energy system. I think we have a couple out there that are solar, but a majority of these are geothermal heating and cooling systems on properties. And this is, it's not required to apply for this. If we find out that there's a geothermal system on your property, we add that to your valuation and whatever it adds to the valuation, that amount is exempt from your assessment for four years.
Any questions on the exemption? Or credits, I mean. Hearing none, thank you. Item 14 is an action to approve the 2020 Repairian Buffer Strip Classification Applications. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. A report?
Well, the repairian buffer strip applications are for anybody that's, um, following the guidelines of a repairian buffer for maintaining clean water. This, uh, this classification and value reduction started back for the 2018 assessment and we had, it looks like, six parcels that qualified back in 2018 with four separate owners. And what we've done at that point in time is for the following year, we've mailed out to the people that already qualified and were approved continuing applications for 2019 and 2020 as you have to apply on an annual basis for this. And for 2020, we had three owners apply. Five separate parcels for a total value reduction of $48,660.44.
Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Jacob, sitting on our ad hoc drainage committee, one of the things that we're looking at is how we can get more people to participate in that program because that would help with drainage. What kind of feedback are you getting from the applicants and why do we only have so few, do you think?
About the only feedback I've received going through this process was several different people who thought they qualified or maybe qualified and the value reduction wasn't quite worth going through the process to the landowner. I mean, if you could see this, I don't know if you can see this list, Leanne, but the five people that, you know, filled out their application were approved this year. Um, the total value reduction on one of the parcels is $300 on the assessment. I mean, that's dollars, so it's not really worth a trip from, you know, from wherever to come into our office and fill out this application.
Just during the upcoming year, if you have any thoughts on ways that we can make that program more appealing to people, that would be a good conversation to have another time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No comments or questions? We'll have that discussion later, Leanne. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries. Item 50 is an action to approve disabled veterans.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded.
Right now, according to South Dakota law, if you're 100% permanent and total disabled and rated so by the VA, you are put in contact with our office to apply for this exemption and the only difference from prior years is that you were able to have up to $100,000 worth of assessed value exempt from taxation in prior years. Um, this year, that's changed to $150,000 maximum exemption.
Any questions? Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries. If you may.
So, this obviously changed quite a bit of, of value. Is that, so how would that reflect in our overall numbers? Growth, reduction, is that shown in the reduction for the townships or where's that shown?
Um, the, the tentative numbers that I showed you where we were at in 2019, how much reappraisal we had, how much growth those numbers are all shown before any of these exemptions are applied. So, they're not, these exemptions are not in those numbers.
So, because they went up, but it seems like there's an extra 50,000 in a lot of these
Right.
that are exempt. So, where does that number show at, I guess?
Um, we'd have to look on that first page where I showed you the tentative numbers for Brookings County and down at the bottom, we had all the exemptions listed by exemption type, total number of parcels within that exemption and total dollar amount exempt. In that grand total there, you would see a difference if you pulled out last year's equalization board packet and looked at total exemption there compared to this year.
That's off the total value.
Yes. The tentative numbers values are before exemptions are applied.
Alright, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Move on to item 16 is an action to approve the tax moratorium exemptions. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A report, please, Jacob?
If you have an historic home or property and you make improvements to that property and maintain the historic aesthetics of it, you can take the value of the improvements that you put in the property and apply for a tax moratorium. That's a seven-year program. And this list is unchanged from last year. We're just maintaining these exemptions. Again, you can see on the, the final column on that list when those tax moratoriums are set to come off.
Any other comments or questions? Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries. Item 17 is an action to approve partially taxed exemptions. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. A report, Jacob?
This list here reflects all property that is approved for a property tax exemption, but not at 100% fully exempt. And the reasons are on a case-by-case basis here, but, um, you can see the list of their assessed values and how much exemption they're entitled for. So, on the total list, we have $7.7 million worth of value in all those properties, but only 3.3 million of it is entitled to be exempt.
Okay, any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries. Item 18 is an action to approve discretionary formula exemption. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. A report, Jacob?
In Brookings County, right now, you're entitled to discretionary formula on any ag property that's new construction that values over $10,000. And what we would do is take that, say the building is worth $10,000, we would add it to the assessment roll at 20% increments for a total of five years. And in the fifth year, you're realizing your 100% of your value has been added to your property. Um, commercial-wise, if you have a structure or remodel that's values over $30,000 within our system, you're also eligible for discretionary formula. If you're developing land and you're plating out lots, if you plot a minimum of five lots on an individual plat, those five lots values are also, um, eligible for the discretionary formula. So, this lengthy report here is every parcel in Brookings County that is on discretionary formula currently and what their reduction percentages and amounts are.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Jacob, those discretionary formula applications apply in municipalities as well as out in the county, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, also in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed nay?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 19 is an action to approve the elderly tax freeze exemption. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. A report?
If you meet income guidelines and property value guidelines verified by the finance office, you can receive the elderly or disabled freeze to your property value. This list here is the entire list as of Monday of all the applications received, their total values and what the value's been frozen to. Now, you remember from the last few months here at county commission meetings that we've been approving late elderly freeze applications by way of abatement. That will probably still happen, but these are the ones that we had in our office as of Monday.
Okay, any questions? Comments or questions? Hearing none, all those, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries. Is there anything else anybody would like to discuss? Jacob, anything from you?
That's it for this year.
That's it for this year. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed nay? We are adjourned. Thank you, Leanne.
Thanks, Leanne.